At the board meeting for February 18, 2019, I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Camer.
President.
Carbonaro.
President.
Danny.
Here.
Gabrana, absent, Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
President.
President Wallace.
Here. We have requested that Pastor Just Leverett from Christ Community Church do our invocation this evening. Pastor Leverett?
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here. Thinking through, you know, you guys and all the decisions you have to make, there's a scripture that comes to mind and it simply says this, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God. So I just want to pray that blessing covering over you guys and all you that get to weigh in on some of those decisions as well. Let us go before the Lord. Dear God, we thank you so much for this day and your presence and your awareness to bring your people together. And so it's not by happenstance that you have appointed certain people to be in power, certain people to make decisions that will drastically impact the lives of the people within this community, within this township. And so, God, we just pray your supervision, your provision over everybody that's in this room, but especially those that are, that hold a seat in of authority. God, we thank you for putting them in the seat because it's by yours, it's by your happenstance, it's by your power, it's by your will and by your grace that they're in the seat that they are. And so I pray for, I pray for this meeting, I pray for the decisions and the, and the things that will be made here that will lead people into a deeper community, a place of hope, a place of unity, and a place of understanding that this is a community that's for the people. And so, God, I pray that covering, I pray that covering over everybody here, whatever decisions need to be made. And it's in your name that everybody is together. Through your son, Jesus, we pray this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Leverett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Brings us to our consent agenda this evening. All items listed with an asterisk will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on items on the consent agenda at this point. Is there any item on our agenda that a board member would like to add or remove from the consent agenda?
I would like to add A1 to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to add item D1.
Does anyone have any discussion or other discussion around those two items that they'd like to have addressed at the regular board meeting? That being said, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the following. Board and committee minutes, February 4, 2020, a bills list from February 18, 2020. The consent will also be adding A, under Building and Zoning Committee, A1. The consent will also include, under Building and Zoning, A2. The consent this evening under Finance and Golf Committee will include C1 on the agenda. The consent will also be adding, under License and Ordnance Committee, D1. And that is it.
So moved.
Seconded by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Camer.
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk again please call the roll?
Trustee Danny.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Camer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
That motion carries. This brings us to our treasures report. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you. Included in the packets is the treasure report for the month of December. Also included is the sales tax report. Received $214,284 compared to last year's $196,000, so it was up $1,800 from last year. Also in the MFT report, we received $153,000 compared to $92,000 last year. Now, $92,000 was from the old MFT tax and additional $61,250 was from the new tax that was added this last year. That's it for the treasure report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Are we going to be talking a little bit about the potential changes to local government distribution fund, the LGDF fund during the budget meeting? Have you have any?
Income taxes?
No, the LGDF. Have you heard anything about changes to that?
I'm not sure.
There was, there had been, there had been some back and forth legislation proposed, but there's no position being taken right now at the conferences and they don't feel that it's a big threat, but it is something that we watch closely.
Okay. Anything else for the treasurer? Hearing none, that moves us to the president's report this evening. Trustee Camer is the one that actually initiated this human trafficking proclamation, and I've requested that he read the proclamation for our benefit.
All right. Thanks so much. This is an issue that I brought up several weeks ago, and it's concerning because it's something that seems to be more prevalent across the United States. And I think it's great that our village and hopefully our state, especially as a candidate for the 45th District Illinois House seat, I'd certainly like to see our state be more proactive in preventing and stopping human trafficking. That being said, whereas human sex trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery and occurs when an adult or child is recruited, harbored, or obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, and whereas human sex trafficking is growing throughout the United States, thriving in cities across graphic and socioeconomic variability and nationally, the criminal enterprise of human trafficking is second only to the illegal drug trade in the terms of speed of its growth and being among the most lucrative. And whereas human sex trafficking significantly threatens the safety and well-being of child victims, some as young as infants, and vulnerable adults being purchased, as well as the families of buyers, legitimate businesses, and other communities, and whereas there is a growing body of evidence that targeting sex buyers is pragmatic, effective way to reduce demand within the commercial sex industry, whereas the village of Bartlett proactively investigates websites, advertisements, and businesses commonly associated with sex trafficking, as well as monitors and enforces compliance with regard to the required posting of trafficking resource notices. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Kevin Wallace, president of the village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby call upon all citizens of Bartlett, Illinois, to join the village of Bartlett in continuing our efforts to combat the commercial sexual exploitation of our children and vulnerable adults, and to mitigate the associated public safety, economic, and health risk to our community by combating commercial sexual exploitation through the enforcement of a zero-tolerance policy against any act which may support the sex trafficking of humans. Further, let it be resolved that I, on behalf of Kevin Wallace, president of the village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby ask all citizens of the state of Illinois and the United States of America to join the village of Bartlett in proclaiming a shift away from the culture of tolerance towards human trafficking dated this 18th day of February, 2020.
Thank you, trustee Camer. Brings us to our question and answer session. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have. I don't think I'd like to say. Very hard to be sitting next to a gentleman charged.
Thirty.
Twenty-one. So I think he turns thirty. Do you have enough to give us a ballpark, plus or minus five years?
I'll be turning forty tomorrow.
Oh, it's a big one. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, trustee Hopkins. Happy birthday to you. You shouldn't have said forty, man. You could have got away with it if you didn't say forty.
Thank you, Ray.
I'd like to lift up to the front.
Anything else? All right. Something that ran across my mind, a few things that came up on Metro for you, chief. Do we, I know it's far-fetched, but do we have any type of precautionary measure if for by chance somebody contracts the coronavirus in the village?
As far as.
Plan of action?
Really, it's, it's what they're required to do. So whether it's a precautionary, what's the word?
Quarantine.
Quarantine.
Yeah.
Self-quarantine, or there's a mandatory quarantine. But what may happen is we may be notified of it if we get a call there, and then we have specific PPE requirements that we have before we would go in.
I hope we're like prepped with like maybe a hazmat suit or at least a mask.
We do. Our health officer carries one, and our code officers carry hazmat suits in their cars so that they can, you know, respond quickly. We also work with the county health departments on those advisories, and we've been receiving information from them that we've been posting on the website under the health and safety tag. And then we also get information from the CDC on basic hygiene care and avoidance.
Okay.
So it's a lot of the same things that we do for the flu.
At least it's on our radar, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of our meeting. This is the time when if anybody would like to address the board, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to address the board at this time? You look like a Hopkins. Did you guys just clone each other? Is that what you do?
Hello, my name is Chase Hopkins, and I live at 944 San Piper Court in Bartlett. My dad showed me a post on Facebook about a smoking ban at village-owned parks, and he asked me what I thought about this. I told him that it sounded crazy. We discussed the pros and cons of it, but I determined that making a law about it is just too much. For the record, I'm a kid, and I play baseball. I go to many of these places that the ban would affect. These are all public places for everyone to enjoy. You were all elected to represent everyone in this village, so why are you taking away the right of taxpayers who legally smoke or vape? Yes, smoking is bad. Secondhand smoke is harmful, too. But we're all talking about open-air place, places. Carbon monoxide from cars and trucks are very harmful, too. Will we be taking, will we be rerouting traffic from Oak Avenue? I could go on and on about other cancer-causing smells, but I'm sure you know them. While playing baseball, I've never smelled someone smoking. Same goes for playing at the park. Since this is not a widespread issue, I suggest that you start with something small like post signs that say, "No smoking within 50 feet of playground and gazebo and ballfields during game play." However, if you do decide to take away rights from law-abiding residents, I would suggest you include Bartlett Hills as well. I'm a kid, and I play golf, too. After all, you say, "All of this is for the health and well-being of kids." But what about the kids that go play golf at the golf course? Does this, does this not apply because you make money from the golf course? Don't let your feelings and beliefs get in the way of all residents in our village. Thank you.
Thank you, Chase. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Other than Mr. Weirden? No.
Brought a cake.
Oh, we should have opened that when you got it, right?
I know. That's why I brought it tonight so that I could open it publicly. Mike Worden, 431 South Main Street, Bartlett. Two meetings ago, I was recognized for 40 years on the zoning board, and we got these really lovely crystal bowls, lead crystal, with the village logo on them. And so I just wanted to say thank you very much for, to the village president and trustees and all the village staff and all the support that you've had, that you've given us over the years. It's been fantastic. We're not as active as we used to be back in the days when there was a lot of building going on, but we still have a lot of things to do, and we, I, we address the public and, and try to meet the needs of everybody and balance it with that of the village. So thank you once again.
Just to let you know, that's not a highball glass.
That's really nice.
I can see the village's logo on there. I think it's very, yeah.
They spelled it right.
Very nice.
It was so funny, when I received it, I pretended that I was dropping it, but when I really got it, it was like, whoa.
That's beautiful. Yeah, nice.
Yes.
We should have taken them out other than just presenting it with a blue box.
Yeah. I think Ray wants to use it for a highball glass.
I say, Ray, man, I need it back. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Worden. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? For 40 years, Mike, you should have had that filled, it should have been filled with cash, right?
Yeah. Back in the beginning, when I'm older, was the president, he's beating through the wine past mid-range sometimes, and then go to Lakewood for hours afterwards, and I had to drive back to school.
Well, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Moving on to the standing committee reports this evening. First standing committee report is Building and Zoning Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Mr. President Wallace, items A1 and A2 are covered under the consent agenda tonight. That's all we have.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Community and Economic Development Committee, Chairman Gabrana actually had a patient situation come up with her, so the doctor could not be here, so, but there's nothing on her agenda this evening. Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item C1 was consent, consent. Nothing further for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. License and Ordnance Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item D1, the BAPS amplifier permit was addressed on consent.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and this is to vote on the prohibiting the use of tobacco products and alternative nicotine products on village-owned park properties. I move to approve ordinance 2020 dash.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. An ordinance amending Title V of the Bartlett Municipal Code to add new Chapter 11 thereto entitled Use of Tobacco Products and Alternate Nicotine Products Prohibited on Village-owned Property.
Seconded. It's moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Do we have discussion?
I do. I think I was upstaged by Chase, who pretty much took the sail out of my wind. We talked about this a couple Tuesdays ago. Two days later, Thursday, I was on a plane to visit Disney World. I thought about it, I thought about it, and an opportunity arose when someone in front of me was trying to bring in some prescription drugs without the proper bottle. They escorted her off to the way. I noticed a captain of the Disney security police. I pulled him off to the side, and I asked him questions. It was there two, three years ago. No smoking, no vaping on Disney property. There are 25,000 acres. It's kind of hard for you to go find another place to go. The audio that was playing said you can now smoke and vape in the entrance area, which is next to the buses, and I asked him why that changed. They received tens and tens and tens of thousands of letters complaining that, "I'm 60 years old, I'd like to bring my mother to the park, I can't because I smoke." So we gave the smokers and the vapers an opportunity to go to the most horrific place, and that's right next to the buses with the diesel smell and the heat from the air conditioners. He said, "I've been here 12 years, and I've yet to see anybody finish a cigarette." There are other complaints at the park, like breastfeeding, changing of diapers on the, on the benches. I'm not sure who complained, but while you're doing that on the bench, I don't have a place to sit down. So in a monthly meeting, not only the police, but there's other people that are there that come up with thought process ideas. Saying that you are exiled from doing something within the park, not necessarily also loses you money, but it turns people against your thought process. So they came up with this idea. Come up with a place that they are restricted to do things, such as at Bartlett Park, you could put a blue bench all the way in the corner next to the most hideous horrible tree and put a basin for the cigarette butts and say, "You can smoke here," instead of exiling people from not doing it. There's other things that you can do except just totally exiling. There's a lot of people in town that have been here 30 years that have paid taxes for that park and to tell them that they can't do it. I agree with Chase. There are some things that, as a reformer smoker myself, I cannot stand next to anybody who's smoking and makes me want to throw up. It's just a horrible smell. And secondhand smoke has medically been proven to cause cancer. Vaping is an alternative, still not FDA-approved, it's nine months out, which means in nine months, you're going to have a lot of people who are going to get a prescription for smoking cessation, and that'll eliminate trying to enforce it because they will have the opportunity to do that with a prescription. My point is, is that we're trying to make this a destination town. We want people to come here. This just sends another message that you might move into a new apartment building, but don't go to the park because we don't want you there. Kind of sends the wrong message. I would like us to look at an alternative to say, "You can do this here, you can do this there." Two points that were brought up on that last meeting. Trustee Hopkins had mentioned that there were children dying from vaping. That's, it's a distortion of facts. Yes, they're dying, but the reason that they're dying is that they're not of age to go to a proper smoke shop or a vape shop. They chose to go to some miscreant out on the street that's selling them something that's laced with PCP that has vitamin E in there, which you cannot heat up and then inhale. It just sticks to your lungs, and it kills you. If you go to a proper place, there's nothing wrong with that. To the dismay of most of the board members, I've been doing this for five and a half years. I'm not dead. So it just depends where you buy your stuff. That's my point. I think we could look at an alternative other than just exiling it altogether. Give them an opportunity to smoke in the corner, put a, put a butt container there if they throw the cigarette butts on the floor. That's it. You can't smoke there anymore. You won't have any, any trash from vapors. They don't throw anything on the floor. They inhale it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Seems like Bartlett was behind the curve on this because I think staff did some research, and you guys sent us a, I think, a list of five or six communities that are right next to us that has been banning vaping and smoking and use of other alternative tobacco products for years. So I think this ordinance is good, and I think it's strong, and I support it.
In rebuttal to that, I do believe I had mentioned that by not letting people smoke at Kohler Park, there are softball tournaments there. It's always good for a victory cigar. We're going to take that away. And I do believe trustee Gabrana came back with, "There's no amount of revenue that's worth the safety of our children." Well, that's a good point, but if we're going to take that into consideration, why are we excluding Bartlett Hills? If we're going to do it, do it for all the parks. But I would rather us take a more advanced approach and not worry about what Hannover Park and Streamwood and Carol Stream are doing because we're not lemmings, we're supposed to be leaders. Take an adult approach to this to give people an alternative if they screw up.
How about getting new chairs? Now, okay.
And then you take a harsher approach, but you know.
Any other opinions, comments? Besides, I would just say that I, I'm not a big proponent of restricting people's privileges, but in these situations, I would, I would favor having some kind of a distance would have been my preference.
I agree.
Or designated area. I personally coached for 15, probably 10 or 12 years, football, baseball, lacrosse, soccer. Not one time, not once, and those many years of being out on multiple ballfields everywhere, did I ever come across anyone smoking, anywhere near a child. But I guess the board's had a chance to review the ordinance? Is there other discussion?
I just want to make a comment. I don't know if they looked into this, and I know that the park district, they, they don't have an ordinance of the, of the program that they follow. And what they do in the park district is they insist that there's no smoking around any of the playground or any of the activities where children are involved. And their policies over there are, go to anyone that's smoking, but they have a policy there that people can't smoke. And they, 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 of organized events that are taking place or civic events that are going on. So I'm just wondering if the board feels about that.
You make a motion to table?
If you're going to table it, I don't know that I'd table it to the next meeting. We would need a little more time to figure out with each park where a designated area should be.
Are we going to send Vince out tonight? He'll have to wait until the weekend. He might. Right next to the air conditioner.
We have to describe it somehow. So you have a right to table, make a motion to table.
I personally would not favor it.
But he's in favor of the motion and the ordinance that's presented. Anyone can make a motion to table.
Make a motion to table it.
That requires a second of the motion to table.
Second of a motion to table to, say, the second meeting in March, right?
You don't have to have a specific date.
Specific date. Seconded by Carbonaro to table this with some potential adjustments to the ordinance as presented. We will call the roll.
Trustee Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Camer?
Yes. I'll give it a few more weeks to see what's going on.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny? He said yes?
Three, two. Three, two, good.
You should vote.
I would take some additional time to look at some alternatives, so yes.
Table.
So, motion carries. Item...
So we'll table that for...
Police and Health Committee, item ordinance Title V is tabled to a further meeting date.
That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on our standing committee reports this evening is Public Works Committee Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. Next, we have new business. Does anyone have any new business they would like to discuss with staff?
Yeah, I want to ask a question. Do they have, do the construction that's going on, ask you for it there? What's happening with these gentlemen?
He's currently working on the inside right now. He's sort of got, because of the weather, he can't get the curb in and stuff for his front parking area. There's some things he needs to get fixed up and stuff, I was told today, so I have a call into him right now, but he is progressing on the inside with work and pouring and things like that, so.
Can it give you any idea when he might have that job completed or done?
Well, he's going to have a majority of the outside done this year, for sure. You know, he's got to get it done, so.
We're the third bus, so he has to...
Yeah, his permit does expire in June of the two-year, and then he'll have to pay the 25% that's in our code, so whatever's not done.
I've asked about that quite often, so thank you.
And, Mr. Dingus, can they not stripe roads in the wintertime? That intersection at Sterns and 59 is still a mess.
Same with West Barkwood 59.
There's no stripes anywhere, and the lights are crazy. I don't, I don't get what, where they can finish.
Well, paint is very seasonal, so right now is not a time where they would be able to do it. There's, there are some days where they would, but most of those painting contractors are shut down for the winter, so trying to do anything now might, but we can take a look at it.
What about the lights? That's not the permanent lights, I'm assuming.
Well, those are temporary lights. Those are, I mean, they got the dual left working now, but those should be functioning.
They are functioning.
Now, we had an issue the other day where it wasn't...
Just not sure what lane you're in.
I know. Happened to me.
Because there's no paint, there's no, like, these are the two left turn lanes, and there's no middle one, so they really need, if they're not going to do anything until May, they need to go out and do something.
Spring, yeah, as soon as...
Somebody's, there's going to be another accident there.
We can talk to them, see if they can use...
And that sign where you're coming out of that one mall, we were, I thought we had agreed that it was going to be during rush hour, you can't take a left out of there, but other times you can. Do you know when that's going to be posted? Because I still see people taking a left out of there.
Yeah, we've talked to them about, right now it's posted, "No left turn."
Right, at all.
But we've talked about them, about putting the time limits on there.
Okay.
We'll follow up with them.
Yeah, I mean, some of these days have been nice enough where they could clean some of that up, I think, so, I mean, it's still, it's dangerous right now, because I don't know what lane I'm in over there. And it's changed so much that you don't know if, you know, I think our man of administrator almost got ran over. I don't know if that was the same place, but, so, okay, anything else? No questions? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll be moving directly into the committee the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Camer, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky? Carbonaro, Danny? Hopkins?
Yeah.
Camer, yes.
We are adjourned. Once again, ladies and gentlemen...